In the Aasiru Dikipattai, Mudalam Naal Maale Velai Kaade, Nan Kattarai Nandhiyodustoddhurikare.
Me Aasirilla, Palivini Davase Sandhyava, Udesa, Mahavasira Prashant Sakkarannemi.
I pray his call for this blessed evening in your midst.
In the Naatkaliil, Nam Vedatil, Arokeythi Kurithi, Nam Padike Vandhirukaram.
Vidhavasule, Shuddhalivile, Divya Saniparakshavapilibandhava, Igana Ganimata, Aparasvissitnav.
We're all gathered together to learn about divine health right from the scriptures.
If you are stricken with any sickness and ripsicles or disease is serving against your life in your life, you make sure that you will search out your life before you leave the presence of God and that will bring out a real solution in your life.
I shall mention before you three people who was beaten by the Lord.
This is what we read in 2 Samuel chapter 12 verse 15 because of the beating on the law. We see as to how the Lord smote the child and he was suffering there because of a terrible sickness. Even at the point of time when he should have gone for the battle, he gave room to comfort and all sorts of lasting his life. And therefore, he became smitten by the Lord and there was a destruction to his seed. When you fail to go for prayers at the time when you should give it to the Lord and you become smitten by the Lord. And therefore, there becomes comes a destruction in your life. When you fail to go for prayers at the time when you should give it to the Lord and you become smitten by the Lord. And therefore, there becomes comes a destruction in your life. In the same manner, we see in 2 Samuel chapter 6 verse 7 because of the ark of the covenant which showed. Uzzah tried to hold it and we see was smitten by the Lord and he died. In the same manner, unnecessarily when you indulge in God's service or ministry, you will be smitten by God and there comes a destruction. That is why with this knowledge, King David says, "I will not exercise my skill in great matters or in things too high for me. Surely I will behave myself and quiet myself and become like a child that is weaned." According to what we read in 2 Chronicles chapter 26 verse 22, King Uzziah also, he tried to do the work of a priest there. And he became smitten by the Lord, he became a leper and eventually he faced destruction in his life. When does a believer lose his good health and strength? When you read Numbers chapter 9 verse 13, we can see when a child of God will fail to keep the Sabbath and fail to observe the Sabbath. He will be smitten by the Lord, he commits a sin against the Lord. When you fail to keep the Sabbath and fail to observe the Sabbath, he will be smitten by the Lord, he commits a sin against the Lord. When according to Deuteronomy chapter 23 verse 21, when a child of God will make a covenant with the Lord. When he fails to observe it or hate, it becomes a sin and therefore he becomes smitten by the Lord. When you fail to keep the Sabbath or observe the Sabbath, the Lord, you commit a sin against the Lord and therefore the Lord smites you. So therefore, don't make a covenant in that manner. And when you make a covenant, you have to observe it, pay it with a sacrifice. Don't remove the moustache, but if you remove the moustache, don't have it back once again. Don't take jewelry, but if you take it once again, remove it, don't put it once again. If you make a covenant in your life that you will not take medicine, don't ever take it. You cannot have double action and triple action after you come into the truth. You have to live as an original person as you are. Either you be a sinner or a saint or else be cold or be hot. But why are you holding between the two and not being any one of them? If God be God, follow God, if Baal be God, you follow Baal. This is the common understanding of the people in CPM, if you commit some serious sin, that is a sin. If you will fail to take communion after taking water baptism, it becomes a sin against you, against the Lord. And therefore, when you try to make a covenant, you have to pay it otherwise it becomes a sin against the Lord. And according to 1 Samuel chapter 3 verse 13, we can see because of his errors and mistakes, there was a curse that came upon his life. And therefore, he became smitten and there was death also. According to what we read in 1 John chapter 5 verses 14 and 15. The sin is of two categories. One is sin pertaining to death and the other one not pertaining to death. You can go home and read that list which consists twenty-three things, items, and those are sins pertaining to death. What are those twenty-three sins? Romans chapter 1 from verse 29 to 32, we can say read the words of Saint Paul where he has mentioned the list of sins. And if you will actually observe them, we will all be in a defeated state. It is a very general thing that man is without good health right in the society today. There are people who are seen with sickness is because of the reasons they have no reconciliation. A particular sister became very sick. And fasting and prayers were held for her. And even prayer chains were held for her. Whatever that could be done scripturally, all that was done for her, but it was all futile. And this is what Pastor Don had told her, whatever that could be done for your health and recovery, we have done it scripturally, all for the best of us. But I hope that you have got a sister somewhere living close by, you stay there in her place for some time. And this is the who was sick, became ten stop all of a sudden. And this is what that sixth sister said, "I will go anywhere wherever you may tell me to go, but I will not go there because we were not on talking terms even before I joined the ministry." And this is what Pastor Don said, "You must actually go there." And this sister repented. And she asked pardon from her sister even before she could go to her house. This is the who was sick for many long time, many long years, but she became healed, she got healed immediately. And this is what that other man said, "Yes, we fasted and this sister repented." However, others may endeavor and pray for your health, for your recovery, unless you put yourself right and repent for your sins, you can never be healed of your sickness. According to what we read in the Gospels in Mark chapter 2, we can see there was a man of the policy was brought before Jesus. And Jesus is looking at the man's sons, "Your sins are forgiven only when Jesus said, 'Your sins are forgiven,' he became healed of his policy." He was suffering so much in his bed of sickness. And he was experiencing strong pain in his bones. It is said about him, his life abroad and his soul dainty meat. His bones were sticking out because he became so thin. Pray more than you may, Father, and Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Oh dear beloved, even this evening you may have come to the presence of God without sound health and strength, with physical ailments, disease and sickness, and the Lord is there to heal you. It does not matter in what circumstance you were made sick or became sick, but remember, there is a redeeming or healing virtue that which is able to heal you and make you to recover. What is that healing power and who is that person who is able to deliver you and make you to recover from your disease? When we turn to Job 33 and read verse 24. I have found the redeeming item. Who is able to redeem us? And even according to what we read in 1 Timothy chapter 2 verse 6, Jesus Christ is that ransom who became a sacrifice for us. And he became a ransom for us to be testified in due time. If you will find out who this ransom is, that which is that is Lord Jesus Christ and also accept this as Jesus ransom as a personal saving your life. You have stepped out into the first step of conversion. One instance, after I finished the meeting, there was a thin-looking person who was bald-headed and who looked so frail, he came up to me. He had tied a lot of threads round his wrists, he would have gone to so many religious places for his recovery and the wife brought this man up to me. And after some days, a baptismal service was held. And in order to take baptism even on that day, there was a person who approached, he looked very fat and healthy-looking and he came along with his child. Looking at this man, I said, "You have just come today, you have to come continually in order to take water baptism here." But this is what he said, "I've been coming every month." Then I told him, "I have never seen you in my church." And this is what the man said, "I am the same man whom you may have seen as a skeleton coming along with my wife and the Lord Jesus has healed me now." When you reach Job 33, 25, you will be able to see the end result of obtaining the ransom in your life, seeking out to him and finding it out and experiencing that ransom in your life. His flesh shall be fresher than a child. And the word of God says, "He shall return to the days of his youth." You are beyond the name of God. This is the reason for the reason of the sickness of man's life, we see it's all because of the sins in his life and the failures and he is driven towards them. You are beyond the name of God. And the second reason. When we turn to Matthew 12 and read verse 22. And this man, he had a son who was being tormented with the devil with an evil spirit and he himself says, "He is possessed with the devil." When we turn to Matthew 15, 28, we can see when the Lord Jesus revealed that spirit, that child was made whole or it became normal. You need to understand right now that the second reason for sickness is the devil. When we turn to Luke 13, 16. This woman was stooping for eighteen years, she could not lift up herself and Jesus said, "She was tormented with the spirit of infirmity." There is no definite name for this sickness, it was simply known as the spirit of infirmity. And another reason or an example for this sickness is we can read in 2 Corinthians chapter 12 verse 7. As to how Paul was tormented because of the thorn in the flesh and it was by the messenger of Satan. You are beyond the name of God. Even today, in order to reduce the speed or the pace of the people, we see that Satan's power is working against the people who are powerful, popular and famous. We can see Satanic church also growing abundantly. A particular man, when he was on his journey abroad, he had taken a packet of biscuits and started eating the biscuits. For the sake of manner, he has offered the biscuits to the next person and also wanted him to eat it. He said, "Sorry." And he wanted to know the reason. The other man said, "I don't want it because I'm fasting." This man who offered the biscuit, he was a nominal Christian and he was put to shame thinking that the other man was fasting when he is also Christian. Immediately, he had asked the other man to which denomination do you belong. And the man who was fasting, he had said, "I am a member of the satanic church." This man had questioned, "Do they fast in the satanic church?" And this is what that other man said, "Yes, we fast for three main reasons." And he wanted to know what those reasons are.
And he wanted to know what those reasons are. And this is what he said. This is our first saga. Good spiritual, healthy families should have separation. They must divorce.
And the second reason, very good people, spiritual people should meet with an accident
and be put to death.
And very good servants of God should get caught or entangled in adultery.
So you try to understand why the people, the members of the Satanic church fast.
If you are unable to live with your spouse anymore and if you won't divorce, just remember
that is the result or the answer of the prayers that are offered by the Satanic church. This is what we read in Revelation 2:22 as to how the spirit of Jezebel is working against God's people in the end times.
If you are unable to live with your spouse anymore and if you won't divorce, just remember
that is the result or the answer of the prayers that are offered by the Satanic church. If the devil is behind your sickness, you need to chase away the devil in order to recover from the sickness. We read in Matthew 12:7 about the dove, death and dumb spirit. And in Mark 9:25, we read about the death and the dumb spirit.
We read in Matthew 16:22, we read that this evil spirit will work in you so that it
will not make you recover. When we turn to 1 Thessalonians. When we turn to 2 Thessalonians 18. It is mentioned when these spirits will, powers will enter into you, it will hinder you from serving the Lord.
When we turn to 1 Thessalonians 2:18, he said, "I am sorry."
In 1 Thessalonians 18, it says, "Satan hindered us so that we will not come unto you and serve you."
You will be unto the name of God.
One reason is sin, second reason is devil. Third reason is some reason according to the sickness. We can never say it's because of sin, a person gets sick. You can never say it's because of the devil, a person gets sick. Sickness can come to you for the sake of the glory of the name of the Lord in order that you may be raised up as a witness for the Lord.
That could be sicknesses for the people of the world and even according to the scriptures because of lack of sleep, lack of rest and also abundance of work and so on and so forth.
And even according to the word of God in Gospel and Mark, we can see Jairus' daughter was also sick and she was nigh on to death. So in this manner, in the scriptures, you can read about so many people who became sick. That was a man who was a paralytic. That was a woman who had the issue of that for 12 years. That was a woman who was bound together for 18 years. We can also read about a man who was by the pool of Betis now for 38 years. And in Acts of the Bosses, in chapter 4, we can read about a man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful. So in this manner, man may be restricted from sicknesses because of so many animals and birds and so many other things and circumstances. We can read about the sickness that comes about the people of Egypt even according to Deuteronomy, chapter 28. And we can also read about the sickness in John, chapter 5, verse 6, about the infirmity for 38 years. And we read about Daniel that he was sick for a particular period of time in Daniel, chapter 8, verse 26. And we read about this particular man who was sick because of a particular sickness in Mark 1:44.
When we turn to 1 Corinthians 28, we read about a man who was sick on to death because
of striving in the ministry for a long time. You will be unto the name of God. What could be the reason for sickness? You need to identify whether it is the sin or the curse or the devil or because of the state of your mind. When a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself, he will become weak, he will become sick and eventually even sleep too. Also, we read about people who became gluttonous and they become sick because they have no victory over food.
This woman was stooping for 18 years.
They did not have victory over flesh, over meat and even while the meat was in their mouth, they got destroyed.
According to 1 Corinthians 14, 40 and 45, because of murmuring, complaining and grumbling,
people become sick and got destroyed in the same manner in the hospital and the bar when they go on murmuring, grumbling. Remember, that is the reason for sickness. This is what the word of God says. We read in 2 Corinthians 2:7, he was in a hurry. We read in 2 Corinthians 1:12 about a man who fell from the loft downward and he became sick and got killed. You will be unto the name of God.
Even today, in order to reduce the speed or the pace of the people, we see that Satan's
power is working against the people who are powerful, popular and famous. We can see Satanic church also growing abundantly.
A person who goes to a church, he eats biscuits.
A particular man, when he was on his journey abroad, he had taken a packet of biscuits and started eating the biscuits. For the sake of manner, he has offered the biscuits to the next person and also wanted him to eat it. He said, "Sorry." And he wanted to know the reason. The other man said, "I don't want it because I'm fasting." This man who offered the biscuit, he was a nominal Christian and he was put to shame thinking that the other man was fasting when he is also Christian. Immediately, he had asked the other man to which denomination do you belong? And the fasting. In Acts of the Bosses, chapter 9, we read about Tabitha who passed away and she became sick and then passed away. Dear beloved, I have placed before you the three reasons. When you, I mean, I shall give you the time, you search out and analyze whether your sickness is because of any of these reasons. You search out your life and see whether the sickness is because of the affliction of the devil.
All the sickness could be because of your lack of rest, lack of sleep, abundance of
your work or the grudge and the grievance against your children, against your spouse. You analyze the situation and search out the matter. What is your state this evening? What is the state of your sickness? According to Job 12:20, are you also saying like Job, everything was so nice and plentiful, but I have lost all things now? And according to Job, chapter 31, verse 15, are you also saying, "My welfare passed away as a cloud?" What is your confession about your sickness this evening? I have no healing. This is what Job says in Job, chapter 3, verse 26. "I have no quietness and the trouble has come upon me. I have no safety too." Perhaps it could not be just one sickness, it could be so many sicknesses striving with you. This is what we read in 1 Corinthians 2:7, he was in a hurry. This is what we read in Isaiah 1:6, from the soul of the foot even unto the head, there is no soundness in it because it is full of beautifying wounds. You will be left behind if you will be sick like this. Everyone will hate you when you are sick. Whether you like to live or not, others will want you to die soon. And in 1 Samuel, chapter 13, verse 15, we read about the man Amalekai. He says, "My master left me because I became sick." You should be healed of your sickness today. This is the reason as to why I taught so many reasons for your sickness in the light of the evidence of the word of God. It is for you to analyze your problem and come out of your sickness. May you believe that Jesus bore your sicknesses. May you believe that Jesus bore your sicknesses.
In 2:21, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
May you believe that while he strives, you are healed.
In 2:22, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
And may you believe that Jesus has all the power and authority to heal you of your sickness.
In 2:23, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
he will become weak, he will become sick and eventually even sleep too. You need to believe that Jesus has destroyed all the powers of Satan that brings all the sickness upon you. He has bruised the head of Satan and has overcome that Satan, that sickness.
In 2:24, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself, he will become weak, he will become sick and eventually even sleep too.
And even in the same times, it is not only for the people who lived a full time but even unto you. In the end times, Jesus has trampled the head of Satan on his feet.
In 2:25, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
he will become weak, he will become sick and eventually even sleep too. The devil may bring sickness like the floods and the devil may bring sicknesses and distresses like the floods against your life and ministry but if you have believed that Jesus will overcome all of them for you, be erect on your knees.
In 2:26, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
he will become weak, he will become sick and eventually even sleep too. Even by faith, when you shall be erect on your knees by the name of the Jesus of God, all these powers will be destroyed and you will have victory.
In 2:27, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
he will become weak, he will become sick and eventually even sleep too. All these powers will be destroyed and you will have victory.
In 2:28, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself, he will become weak, he will become sick and eventually even sleep too.
Whatever the sickness or resist may be, it should flee away from this hall, from your family, from your spouse and from your children.
In 2:29, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
he will become weak, he will become sick and eventually even sleep too. These sicknesses made your life dark and also made your ministry as one which was full of darkness.
In 2:30, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
he will become weak, he will become sick and eventually even sleep too. The sound of righteousness who is able to enlighten every man, he shall shine forth in your life. Under his wings, you will have healing.
In 2:31, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
How many of you feel that the Lord is moving, even on the first day of our meeting?
In 2:32, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
Four, five minutes, don't open your eyes.
In 2:33, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
Let now get up and go away from this hall.
In 2:34, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
If possible, be erect on your knees and keep on telling the Lord, "Lord, heal me."
In 2:35, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
Oh Lord, you wash me, I will be made as white.
In 2:36, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
Oh Lord, you heal me, I will be healed.
In 2:37, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
You arise for me, I will have victory.
In 2:38, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
This is the moment in which Jesus will heal you.
In 2:39, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
you can expect God to heal you hundred percent.
In 2:40, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
Other power can withstand you.
In 2:41, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
Put on your power.
In 2:42, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
Put on your strength.
In 2:43, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
They copy your fire.
In 2:44, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
Jesus will heal you.
In 2:45, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself, May God give me the blessing of the Lord.
How many of you are truly anticipating healing? Only such people raise your right hand.
In 2:46, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
he will become weak, he will become sick and eventually even sleep too. Don't be boasting about your sickness, don't say that sickness, this sickness because the devil is moving, working mightily subtly.
In 2:47, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
Oh Lord, at this age twenty-three, you mention one word for my healing sake.
In 2:48, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
Oh, cry out to God.
In 2:49, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
receive healing.
In 2:50, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself, In Jesus' name, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen. You said, "Come and hold my hands." And then you will be reborn.
A father says, "Oh Lord, you come and keep your hand upon me, I will be healed."
A father said, "Come and hold my hands." And then you will be reborn.
And this is what our master said, "If you will speak one word for the sake of my servant, he will be healed."
You said, "Come and hold my hands." And then you will be reborn.
How many of you are going to tell at this meeting? Oh Lord, you touch me, speak one word, I will be healed.
In 2:51, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself, The sickness is departing from you right now. The sickness is departing from you right now.
Just one minute.
The sickness is departing from you right now.
The sickness is departing from you right now. Sickness should not simply depart from you and the devil also simply should not depart from you. It should be rooted out from your life.
Just one minute.
Why do I say so?
You know the sickness is wrong.
When the sickness departs from you, you may think that you are healed. After two days, you will fall ill again. So that is how it works when it departs.
In 2:52, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
When the song shall heal you, you will have perfect soundness, there will be no more sickness.
Amen. I will be reborn.
You speak one word, I will be healed. You just rise up and I will have victory.
In 2:53, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself, he will become weak, he will become sick and eventually even sleep too. You have been holding this blessing until now.
The power that kept you bound hitherto is being destroyed now.
In 2:54, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
How many of you believe that this is the day in which the Lord shall heal you?
In 2:55, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
Are you sick in the head, are you sick in your legs, in your feet, are you sick in your bowels? In the name of Jesus, you should be healed right now.
In 2:56, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
Then, dip your sunny parakshave, alepia. This is the moment in which the anointing of divine health is going to descend upon you.
In 2:57, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
Be erect on your knees with hands, raise up the anointing of divine healing. Divine health is getting into your body.
In 2:58, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,
Be erect on your knees with hands, raise up the anointing of divine healing. Divine health is getting into your body.
In 2:59, when a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself, वल्लमय उंडे, उंडे, अत्पुद वल्लमय येसुवे रददे वल्लमय उंडे, उंडे, अत्पुद वल्लमय अद्देश रददे वल्लमय येसुवे
वल्लमय उंडे, उंडे अत्पुद वल्लमय अद्देश रददे
बले, बले, निश्वर्पन बली, येसुस्ते रिबाले, बले, बले, निश्वर्पन बली, येसुस्ते अद्देश रददे दरिश पावल, पावल, वंदरवर्की पावल विद्यप्प अद्देश रददे दरिश पावल, पावल, वंदरवर्की पावल विद्यप्प वल्लमय उंडे, उंडे, अत्पुद वल्लमय येसुवे रददे वल्लमय उंडे, उंडे, अत्पुद वल्लमय अद्देश रददे वल्लमय उंडे, उंडे, अत्पुद वल्लमय येसुवे
रददे अद्देश रददे, अत्पुद वल्लमय अद्देश रददे
Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Hallelujah, 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 रिबाउ सिरला बना, बालिया, गला बालिया Hallelu- Hallelu- Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen. देवितिन आरोक्यम, इगले कुनमाकिनदुकाय सोतरमनुव
दिव्य सनिस्तार अरक्षा उन्वास अप्पदि तिबिन निसा, अपि उन्नस सुटिकरमु
Hallelujah. अंद देवीगतिन आरोक्यतिन वल्लम नमुकले क्रियशमुल एल्ला असुत्तावियल नम्लमुट्टी फैयुले राखाय सोतरमनुव
मे दिव्य सनिस्तार रक्षावे बले, अपतुलक्रियाकन अवस्थाविदी, सियल्लु आकन नपुरु आत्म, अपतुलिन दुरुवेनवा, एमनिसा सुटिकरमु
Hallelujah, सोतरम, सोतरम, सोतरम Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah.
कथरिंगोड़ पेश एल्ला अरुम्यान वार्तेलुकाय सोतरमनुव उन्नस अपसमकता कलाव, अनार्गवचने अन्निसा, अपि उन्नस सुटिकरमु
Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen, hallelujah. इविद भागे, इन्नम वेदम वेदम तुम, मुदलाल कुटत्ले कथरे आशीर्वादित्तुकाय तुडंदे, नड़कमुर कुटत्ले आशीर्वादिकुमरियाय सोतरमनुव
मे बाइबल पाटम मालावे, पलमु तवसेतीम उन्वासे, आशीर्वाद कमलेबु, अकंडम, उन्वासे अप्पट आशीर्वाद करण्टो उन्ने, एमनिसा अपि उन्नस सुटिकरमु
Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. सोतरम, 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 सोतरम तिदा कुमारन वरसुताय देवनुकाय सोतरमनुव
के नान पुत्रया नासुत्तम अन्नस अन्निसा सुटिकरमु
Hallelujah, hallelujah. सोतरम, 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 सोतरम एल्ला आकानम हिमतुदि देवनुकुड़दु सोतरमनुव
सियल्लम गौरे महिमे प्रसांसाव, उन्नस सुटिकरमु
Hallelujah, सोतरम, सोतरम, सोतरम Amen, जोमो
प्रिय मनोवे नानस, दिव्य सनीपा रक्षावे पिलिबंद, उबहनसे पिलिलकर दितिबिन, मे बाइबल पाड़ महालावनिसा अपि उबहनसे सुटिकर्नव स्वामीनी उबहनसे के वचने तुलिं, रोगियत हेतु उबहनसे किया देमिन सित निसा सुटिकर्नव रोगिया अप्पट बलपान आकारे उबहनसे पिनवादे मिन सित निसा सुटिकर्नव एमनिसा स्वामीनी उबहनसे के वचने, होदिन अवबोधकर्गन समतम उपकारकलमैनव ए रोग जयगेनीमसन्दा, उबहनसे मार्गे पिनवादे मिनसिरिनव ए वचने अनुव, रोगे जयगेनीमसन्दा शिवदनाथ उपकारकलमैनव तमुन्न तवतवत पवित्रकर्गेनीमु उपकारकलमैनव उबहनसे सात्थान पराजेटपात करदिबिनव, सात्थान गिहिस फोड़िकरदिबिनव उबहनसे नेगिसित निर्दी, अप्पट जयातपातवेनव एमनम तवदरुरत उबहनसे के अदहास सलेश्म, अवबोधकर्गेन स्वय मिदिम निधाहस, उबहनसे के गौरवेस सन्दहाम, अत्पातकर्गन नपुड़ उपकारकलमैनव अदिन उबहनसे, जय अनकर्मिन सिदुकले सियलु हास्कम निसा सुटिकर्नव उबहनसे के अदहास समतनागी जीवित इष्टकलमैनव, उबहनसे के राज्यदाप सौदानाम कलमैनव सियलु रोग दुरुल कम जयगेनीमुट, उबहनसे वेड़िवेडियंग करुनाव्दनमैनव, ये स्वास्तिकिन
Amen.